Fishfield Support Center Jehovah's Witnesses at a development plant. A 15,187 square foot 20-story accessory maintenance building. The reconstruction of an existing 14,527 square foot warehouse for accessories and floor parking spaces. The proposed project is produced by members of the Religious Order and Religious volunteers. The targets for this proposal are located in PI and Industries Unit District with one line consisting of 52.2 acres as five Chelsea Rich Park and the other consisting of 5.24 acres at 20 sales Chelsea Rich Park. This will be a continuation of the public hearing that was opened by the planning board at April 14, 2022. Good evening. Mr. Broderick, members of the board. My name is Michael DeMaio. I'm the Director of Design for Jehovah's Witness hearing and put it down. And Mr. Heiner couldn't be here and had a holy demand to deal with, so we wanted to apologize and make sure that you all understood he'd be here. We're here for the continuation of your public hearing. Appreciate the comments that you've received so far. We've done our best to let everybody back to the board and we're here for some additional comments. Thank you. Before I open to public comments for the evening, I do want to make note of a few items. First, this application is on the agenda later tonight for the project review where we will discuss this project in greater detail, including some of the topics brought up during the public hearing that are part of the purview of this board. The public comments that were received at the April 14th planning board meeting, as well as those public comments that were had been received by email since the past meeting, are part of the project record. I would kindly ask the public to provide only new or different information or commentary from all those comments that state that the updated comments made previously or at prior meetings are protected. I will note that we received several comments via email since the last meeting. I will not read each of the emails we've emailed, but I am sure the public that you know providing are part of the project record and that are part of the view that our board are consultants and who are applicant. We'll all be doing it. The key items pertaining to the purview of this planning board, we discussed with the applicant in detail. And so the first email has been Donald Sturther dated April 14. I believe this was the same message that was passed out to the board at the April meetings, a three-page letter with 14 comments. Comments addressed some of the following topics: landscaping, lighting, future lighting, amplified sound systems, hours of operations, questions about town special permits, easements, beats and patterns, soil relocation, suggestions for tinted glass on windows and emergency roads and access. We received an email from Meg Cottis from 200 Court received on April 14. Provided a one-page handwritten letter. Issues mentioned in this letter to the upper end lighting and locations of proposed activities on-site. We received an email from Megan Nigori at 5793 Fulton Way dated April 14. The issues mentioned in the email included impacts to the adjacent Holland Ridge and broader neighborhoods, visual impacts, noise impacts, property values, traffic on Rockway Road, and tax burdens on town with respect. We received an email from Ann Cantor at 4907 Ridge Press Drive dated April 28. Email in brief with comments provided previously regarding traffic, noise, and lighting. We received an email from Daniel S. Wilson dated earlier today, May 12. Email mentioned tax burdens, usage of county entities, parkrun size, and traffic. We received an email from Pam Jones earlier today, May 12. Email mentioned traffic concerns about the recreational area. We received an email from Richard Godwin today. Email expressed opposition to the project but did not make any references to specific topics that would be part of the purview of this planning board. And we also received an email from a name party that said we did not make any references to specific topics that would be part of the purview of this planning board. At this time, I will recognize those of the public who wish to speak. When you come up, I kindly ask you to provide your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just give me my phone. My bad. My bad. Charles.
So if I show hands. So I just want to commend all of my neighbors that are present here today to speak out and stand up against a project that would cause some strain to our lives. I would like to ask the board, or just suggest to the board, the things that you're asking us not to repeat when we're not present here and those letters and emails that you have received from other residents. If we're not prepared to that information, we may just repeat it. So it's probably best to read those emails in its totality to assist us in the audience to prevent repeating some of the information. Just a suggestion from myself. That this project with over 250 parking spaces is exclusive to a Rockway and Holland Ridge road that only has one way in and one way out. In addition to that, since 2003, there's been a numerous amount of accidents that have occurred there. Unfortunately, I have foiled Fishfield, I've foiled the state police, and I've also foiled the state and the county. I am awaiting all of the police reports that coincide with the accidents that have occurred there. My sister is one of those individuals who was going up the hill and another vehicle struck her and she kind of rolled down into the mountains. This is without excessive amount of 250 additional cars coming into our community on a weekly basis or whatever basis fits. So we are not opposed to a good neighbor, but we are telling you now with our presence that this is not a project that we are welcoming. We understand that they have as a right building, but they do not have to build 250 parking spaces. They call the recreation center an access place. However, if they're going to build something like that, maybe they should build a dome, something that you can find the noise that we continuously hear where I live at because they're cheering each other on. Again, we are not against people doing what they want to do on the property that they have. However, noise travel and we are affected by this. So it's my hope that this public hearing will remain open because I was unable to download the 1,805 pages that consisted with this agenda packet so that myself and the other neighbors can comb through it and ensure that all the things that were requested be done, be done. The other thing is, is that at the last meeting, some of the residents where I live attempted to speak. If we're going to close a public hearing, you can close it, but you cannot then allow the attorney to speak to the same issues. And so therefore, we found that to be unfair and unjust. And again, we live here, we pay taxes here, you guys sit here to assist and help us. And so this presence today is telling you that this project is going to cause our lives a lot of inconvenience if it's not scaled down or changed and we're not given the opportunity to review the 1,805 pages that consisted with this agenda. Your actions to move this forward would be unjust. Thank you.
Hello, Jason Frankville from 6107 Hyrum Ridge Court. One thing I thought was worth mentioning is years ago, ABR Realty was granted to permanent place and they were trying to develop near the water. There were terms there to try to give the residents of Fishfield better waterfront access because we have very poor waterfront access. And unfortunately, the trend has been going in the opposite direction. So the places we used to be allowed to walk, we're not allowed to walk anymore because they're just passing signs. Even a couple of spots we could drive and look at the sunset over the river, they put no parking sign there. So the point is, it's totally cutting off the town of Fishfield from the beautiful Hudson River. It would be good for any development happening there to purposely enhance the shield and residents' access to the river. Thank you for the sign. Thank you.
My show of hands, if anyone else from the public wishes to speak?
Yes. My name is Louise Danielle. I'm a taxpaying resident official. I'm also a member of the town board, but I'm speaking tonight as a concerned resident. It is in my opinion that this project concerns beyond many levels. Town comprehensive planning is used to regulate public health, safety, and general welfare of citizens. This project, this proposed project does none of this. Allowing 246 parking spaces for those who live in a complex to park and work or use the building or grounds will affect those in nearby areas by polluting the air with unnecessary vehicle emissions from 246 vehicles. They have already advised they will create walking paths and bicycle paths, which should be used instead. If the weather is dead, they can create a jitney van, which they have numerous vans, and they can pick up and drop off the residents, which would be eliminating a large parking area, using less asphalt, and creating less runoff and groundwater concerns. The safety of taxpaying residents is put in jeopardy with the increased amount of traffic that will travel on one road that leads in and out, Rockway Road. Although they state the primary users of the proposed project will be residents of Rivercrest, who are their secondary users? Will this be weekend, a weekend retreat location? Will it be a functioning business with employees, other members residing in Rivercrest? Traffic study was only done based on the premise that the primary users are Rivercrest residents. The unknown secondary traffic of buses, vans, and trucks creates potential for more accidents and poor quality of road maintenance, which could lead to undue citizen debo maintenance as well as more frequent road maintenance. A road district should be created and maintained by the Jehovah's. The general welfare of the surrounding taxpaying residents is greatly affected by noise and light pollution already from occurring residents. Inviting more people to use new recreational fields will have a negative effect on the welfare of the citizens living in the surrounding area. In August of 2015, the Jehovah Witness Organization bought the third property in the Rockway area, the Chelsea Ridge, with the Chelsea Senior Living facility that was built by ABR. They already owned the Rivercrest luxury apartments and the former industrial way landed buildings. At that time, they advised they were planning on developing a quote "office space," and the previous plans for a video studio were taken off the books. I'd like to know if a video studio is potentially back on the books? Or will it be a business for printing Bible to other printed literature as they do at other watchtower developments? What will be going on in the two-story office building? What will be stored in the one-story storage building? What type of accessories will be maintained in the one-story building? The warehouse will be reconstructed. What will be stored there? I think it is, being a good neighbor, I think that if you're going to be a good neighbor, you should include being honest and transparent and letting residents know what will be coming. Although the Jehovah's may have an as of right to build under property, there are things they can do that might mitigate potential issues. So recap, in my opinion, the following modifications would make this project more agreeable to neighborhood residents, but would make the 246 parking lot. It is just, is not justified in environmental regard. Create a road district to document that they will maintain the road due to the excess of traffic that will be going back and forth with this new rent area, office, work area, warehouse, and loading docks. Three, create an agreement to give local residents in the nearby H.R.I. communities permission to use the walking trails as they have used in the past. Create a document with written consequences if they fail to comply with the established rules regarding lighting and noise, specifically certain times through days and nights, and what would, what they would be held to if they violate them. That's it. Thank you for your time and your service. I'm going to move. I appreciate it.
My show of hands, if anyone else from the public wishes to speak?
Hi, Mary Ellen Stray, we're 42nd and 30th Ridge Crest Drive. At the last meeting, the term of Jehovah stated that the 250 parking spaces was going to be for the people that lived in the parking complex there. My question is, if you're coming to play ball and soccer and you're young, as are some of the people that live there, why do you need 250 parking spaces? Why can you just not walk across the street, particularly since you're going to play sports? Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishes to speak today?
Hi. My name is Heather Spadino, and I'm actually blacking out. People, come on, you gotta say something because this is really disturbing. So basically, so many levels. I know that I went to the last meeting and things were discussed, but people that are here now are not prepared for that information. Where I live, I can close my windows and possibly not hear what's going on outside. I don't step outside and I hear cheering from 10 players playing baseball. I hear the click of the bat and I hear the screaming. And this is starting at 8 o'clock in the morning on Saturdays and Sundays, and we're trying to have a peaceful day. If you come to our neighborhood, you can breathe and you can feel the beauty of Dutch County. And this is why we move up here. And when I tell you how we just is going to be having a soccer field beyond our trees and having a baseball field, or trying our chases where we live and our homes are going to be, our homes are right here. And what they're proposing is right outreach, you can see them. And if they're going to be busing and people teams from other college seats, from other places, they're going to be teams, buses, there's going to be carloads of people. What if 200, and what if these people decide to all come at once? How are we going to get out of our complex, our road? Rockway is a small road. You go onto line D, you can't get out. This today, coming home from work, it is more dangerous. But that's not with Dutch Stadium having a game tonight. This is not with Dutch Stadium having a graduation. We already have too much traffic and it's already devastating. What I'm concerned about is the warehouse. Are there going to be massive trucks going down Rockway? They're going to be, are we going to have pitted roads? It's going to be a disgrace. And what's happening with strangers? Like, I mean, I get it, hey, listen, I don't think it's our neighbors that live at Rivercrest as a Jehovah Witness compound, but they're now going to be having strangers come that don't live here, that are not Fishfield residents, come and use this stream and scream and chanting and woo, you know, but loud. So I'm surprised that more people from streamside, you know, more people from the other communities, they don't know. When I tell you that I mentioned something to the townhouse complex that was next door to the, to Rivercrest, I'll call it Rivercrest. They have no clue what's going on. They don't know. So you have people that spent $450,000 on their townhouse. You have new people, there's new buyers that are coming and they have not a clue at what's going on. I don't want to sell my house. We just got assessed for $40,000 more for our, our taxes. I'm going to pay more when I'm not going to sell my house. I don't want to sell my house when there's new ways, spring, summer, and fall. Spring with soccer and baseball, baseball and soccer all, all summer, and fall, fall. You have noise pollution all the time because they, as much as they're good neighbors, they don't respect our peace at all because there's just 10 of them playing and they're screaming. And you can hear it as far as Dutch Stadium, that noise. And you're, please don't allow this to happen. That's all I have to say. 180 units in the complex. With my neighbor Hannah over there, we walked and we knocked on every door and said, please come. And because of other obligations, people are not able to be here. And I, I mean, I appreciate your time, I really, really do, but please understand that the amount of outreach that I encountered last night, like, are you kidding? I have no idea. It takes me a while. And it's sad. It's sad. I don't know if this is very sad, but anyway, thank you so much. And this is not my, my publicity, people. Not my publicity.
Anybody else who would wish?
Yes, sir. My name is Nadella Saha. I live at 522 Waterway, Hyrum Ridge. I used to live in Bronx, near Palm Harbor Park. And four years ago, when I decided to move out, I used to be a teacher, public school teacher in the city. The same time I joined Calum's Therapies. And we serve this as the Bronx Justice. Four years ago, I decided to have a visit on the ground, moved up to this area. And for me, this is heaven. I believe rights. You have, I have my rights, you have your rights. But I believe that my rights and my real rights, so, my real rights begin. So with this project, I'm not going to add too much because I'm making a decision. I've heard everybody who spoke before me about all the concerns. And these concerns are real. Traffic value, this is one. Besides the noise, the livelihood, I mean, I'm blessed with my life, let alone the money. I wish I could be rich enough to do somewhere else. But at this point, all what I see is, is more valuable, for me, more valuable than everything else, than the money, the houses, the property, everything, is the people I live with. Those are the people that I really enjoy now. Because it's weird I stay here, but it's more, I know what it is, I have it, it doesn't matter this far. But this far is not going to be good. Not good. All I can ask you all, with all this time, is put yourself in our shoes. Stand in our shoes and, and decide. That's all, guys. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Anybody else who wishes to speak today?
Yes.
We live in North Carolina, Aspen, we're in Hyrum Ridge. I've been there for 15 years. Moved up in the Bronx as well. Raised my children. And brought this place to life. Fast, deep, come from New York City, raise the kids, and they come here. I'm a fat boy, I'm a little. And right now, I walk my dog at 6 o'clock in the morning. At any given weekend, I hear that coming through the trees. The loud bullhorns and everything, they want them killed. 6 o'clock in the morning, you don't work. Some days you want to sleep in on a Saturday or a Sunday. It's hard. Taking that from us. We just ask you that you keep this open, just for open. We have a lot of loose things right now. And a lot of people have things to say to give us this chance. So thank you.
I live in Shreve Bay Hills in Mulberry Road. My property abuts Rockway. I have a deck that overlooks Rockway. I see the traffic that goes down that road. I see the construction trucks that come up and down that road. We moved up here for the reasons Southern gentlemen did, for the quietness, for the peace. And to sit up there and watch more traffic come up and down that road, for what? For... who knows? Who knows what it's for? I've seen the accidents. It's just, I don't think this is going to benefit anybody within our community, except the people living back there. I walk my dog back there. I've had people stop me, security back there stopped me because I'm walking my dog on the public road down there. It's not going to be a good situation. So please take that consideration and do what you have to do.
I'm talking to a witness who has a big problem with thousands. And I know personally, for the past quarter, there was a guy named Jesus Keno that was in Walkeville, and he went into military town, he tried my last work, but he was arrested and they sent him out on the country, whatever, whatever. But I think we have a lot of kids floating around, and I haven't heard of any incidents about them either. But I like to ask that, you know, all these defendants, the fact that they have a two-witness rule, so if the second person didn't see it, then the sin didn't happen. So if something happened to a kid, you need protection. Just last month, two elders in Illinois, they were fined 10 months because they committed a child abuse by, you can look up the cases, it's on Michael's in college in Golden Scott. So I'm just saying, as you make these decisions, factor in that it's, you know, obvious and mixed with, it's very important that you think about that.
I was recently moved up to the Hudson Zoo. And I purchased, and this was a concept in 2004, there was not a single house that they were getting. I was sold on the concept of ABR, what that building was supposed to be. Moving from the Bronx, that was deeply for 31-year-old woman. Seeing women had that time to do, to make that little faith because I wanted peace and quiet, moving from the Bronx on Grand Plaza. I saved all my money, $60,000, all by myself, no loans, nothing. And that is what I gave ABR on the concept of this is what we're going to sell. All this has changed over the periods since I've been, I remember they told me to, it's going to take two years to build Holland Ridge and Extreme, Extreme No. I waited patiently for two years. Now that I've been here, I've seen that concept, the original concept of ABR is changing rapidly and not progress. It's actually looking more like a Bronx, which I want to get away from. I'm a taxpayer. I've never been defaulted on my mortgage. I'm a very good, I would say, great citizen. Please do not let me leave this state because that's also going to happen with this, you and this. Thank you.
Is there anything else from the public wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Robert West. I live in Los Angeles, Hollywood. Hollywood, I'm sorry, Hollywood. And I just want to say that a lot of the people who are in our community are retired or current public service. I think you've heard of being, a lot of us came from Bronx, Southern West Side Drive, was a cop for 28 years in New Orleans. We came for the peace and quiet. I lived for about 20 years on a busy corner of my clients. Told my husband, we retire, we're big, we, we got to go to a place that's quiet. You know, we are close to Dutch Stadium, hear the fireworks every Friday and Saturday night. That's enough noise from the outside bedroom there. Okay, we occasionally hear train whistle. That's enough. We do want quiet, we want peace. We've earned it. We have earned it. We're all working people, all taxpayers. I also want to point out, the road conditions, it's the worst, Rockway is the worst road for a lot of traffic. It is narrow, it is steep, it is winding. You can do the man. The end of Industrial Way, where the gate is for the access to the railroad, is frequently very muddy and mucky. That's, that is watchtower property. They're supposed to be maintaining that and they are not. I don't know what they're going to do when they start digging up other land to build things. Where's that road going? One more thing. Old Toll Brothers is building what seems to be about a 90 complex, 90 residence complexes right now. I don't think there's anything we can do about that. It's kind of done, or, you know, it's there, it's in the process of going on. That's 90 additional residences using Rockway. So please, this is, this is a lot. And to say that, you know, you have to be able to control what's going to go on with this watchtower property. They are not taxpayers. You should not be going out of your way to accommodate them. You should be hard on them with every decision that you make. And I really hope you are. Where every light bulb goes, if there's any going to be any kind of noise barrier, is there going to be regulation about how often they can have games, when these games can start, when they can end? Please, please be tough on them. Thank you.
Sixty-one on North Hollywood Street, um, in development. I'm hearing everything that these folks have said on purpose all over the floor, even on this. I just live over on the range, and they built soccer fields over there, right behind our community. And what started out as, we're just doing it in the morning, became all weekend. We had a couple, we had clubs come up, from Westchester. We had clubs come over across the river. And it just became more of a nuisance than anybody could have thought it would be. And everybody is saying, consideration, we're sort of, we're not even beyond five-year-old program. We're looking at the conditions of the city now. And they're going to be, they're going to grow. I mean, it's just the nature of things. Whatever is approved, people always like to say, okay, let's see if we can expand a little more on this. And I think that's what we're all asking for, is just thoughtful considerations for us. We all need, for the same reasons, for to endure their quietness in the community. And the traffic will be bad. There are going to be concerns, civil engineer, I've seen the reports, I know what goes on with these things as well. And it's not going to be, the current road system can do with the humans, not correct, or relieving and coming into the community. So I hope the traffic report does reflect that as well. But just, just be honest with me. Sure, I'll write you some stuff. Thank you.
Hello, I'm a young woman, I'm six years old. I moved up from the Bronx at half twenty-five, I'm six years old. So they actually learned how to ride their bikes and everything. And they take their rides down other roads. We are not told that yet, that we still will not be able to ride our bikes down that way. So we parkour people, but we cannot go up. They're learning how to pee, so they'll be able to see the sign like they really trust one. And that to me, that is parkour, because I grew up in a community like this. They enjoy climbing the bike. Very poor at once, we realized that we can't catch the coronavirus in the air. We took walks to clear our minds to enjoy our life up here, breathe the fresh air. So our children, little six-year-olds, we parkouring that they can't take their bikes anymore. And we'd be riding up Rockway to, or to Leo, because we need the bike truck. Because they're trying to exercise their energy. So they're moving to parkour to see the traffic increase, and be able to not feel the pain of the walk and ride down. So we could be considerate, and create ways that we can live together, if that's something that we would appreciate.
Hi, I'm Sally Anzouche. I've been in Holly Ridge, I've been there for seventeen years. Last month, at the meeting, the Watchtower rep stated that the recreation facility is primarily used for the use of the River Crest forty. So I am asking you to be counted for, and add to the documented approval, that this facility will be primarily used for the River Crest president. Because that's what the reference that it stated last month. I'm also asking for this meeting to be held open again due to a lack of proper notice. You may recall that I asked for that same thing at last month's meeting. And I provided three specific areas where a sign should be placed. I would like to thank the planning board for holding the meeting open, and making that vote. But I have to tell you how incredibly disappointed and really shocked I was that the board took none of the suggested notifications. I had clearly provided three specific spots. So essentially, the meeting was held open for a lack of proper notice. But then absolutely nothing was done to rectify the lack of proper notice. The board, I knew you were discussing, discussed looking at possibly placing another sign, but there was struggle with where the sign could possibly be placed. And not once, but twice, the acting chairman stated that he did not know where to put another sign. But he refused to hear from any of the people that were standing there. They had my hand raised, and they ever had her hand raised. We weren't looking to go on and talk for another five minutes, we're looking to provide a solution to the issue, because we all live here. It doesn't seem like perhaps we're that familiar with the area. But we could have helped you with that situation. However, the Watchtower rep was then invited to come back up and speak, but not the town residents. So it kind of seems like people that don't live in the town and don't pay taxes take priority over the town residents who do pay taxes. And I don't really understand it, you know, how that can be. It honestly got to this point where it felt so absurd, I thought it got as an L of a show. We wanted to go ahead and provide a response to you as to where the new sign could be placed. So I am the vice president of the H800 Holly Ridge, the president was also here. We could have granted permission to place it in one of the places that I had suggested, on Holly Ridge property, right? We could have reached out to Streamside, see if we could get them to agree to put a sign on their property. So, you know, I just don't understand the point of it was held open, and then people were encouraged to submit their feedback, to email, to come to the meeting. But the same issue applies. How would they know that there's a meeting taking place? Because we still did not provide proper notice. The only sign is still down on their property, where no one's going to pass by. It's kind of facing the road straight on, it's at an angle facing their property. There was a traffic study that was done, it looked like over only two days, so not a full week, not, you know, over the weekend. And maybe these are concerns. I don't know really what the accuracy of that traffic study is, and it wasn't, wasn't done, you know, taken over a full week. So again, just to recap, I'm asking you to once again hold the meeting open. I'm asking to have it properly noticed, right? With the three different locations that I specified last time, at the entrance exit to Holly Ridge, the entrance exit to Streamside.
I have grown up in Holly Ridge my whole life. I've had one really big opportunity to crawl on bike rides, and walk. And I'm not too concerned by that. And now with this, without me playing, I feel like I'm safe in the upright. And this is scary for not only me, as the only woman, but for everyone. Sorry, I'm a little anxious. But first, I need people coming in from all over. These are not neighbors, these are not people that we know who they are. These are strangers. And I do not feel comfortable walking out of my house without someone I'm with, you know, because of these people that are coming in. From all over. And just please keep in mind the safety of the children and the families that live in these places. Thank you.
Ms. Tisha Warden, resident, um, Holly Ridge, Hollywood. Like I heard everything everyone's saying, I'm just hoping you really take me in, because it really is a tight community. And I came from Harlem, and I still work in the city. And I've come up here, and it's just so different. It's just the area, the people, the environment, the community. And, you know, it's peaceful, you know, and it's quiet for the most part from where I am. My biggest concern is with the children. You know, we all have young children, and they, you know, of age where they can ride their bikes and, you know, go along the community together. And I'm not, and I'm literally not concerned. You know, I know my son is safe, and he's riding his bike at his parents' party. But at this point now, it's just, it seems like it's going to be a little terrifying. So to know that they are going to go out there, or have to deal with all the traffic coming in and out, you know, with just different people, we're not, you know, we're not familiar with. So please take that in consideration, that the children would, you know, lose out on having that access. And all the traffic that's already going in and out, just going in and out this one way, there's too much traffic. It's going to be dangerous for all of us, the children and for us, driving our cars.
Well, even though I try to say, too, the recommendations for not trying to compete, as I was just saying, my name is Hugh Sauer, of Fishkill. I've been a resident of Fishkill for twenty years. I'm going to just make my comment, not necessarily for our development, and those living immediately there. But I think we all know already, the mess of the car era that not immediately is. And this is going to far impact even us living in the community here. I echo all the sentiments that have already been raised. And that's the first comment. This is going to be a global impact in the town. My second comment is that, you know, people have a right to do, you know, whatever they please to some extent, on a property they own. My concern is, who can and how can that be monitored and enforced? Who's going to, if we agree, or if we come to an agreement that from eight to five, that they're allowed to do whatever they're allowed to do, or they're free to make whatever noise they want to make? But after a certain time on the weekends and the weekdays, if they can't, okay? Who can enforce such a thing, once, once it's in effect? You know, who can tell them what to do, and who can enforce that? So those are just, I think, the couple of your comments. Thank you very much.
We bought this property like, when it was just land, as the ladies had won up my neighbors. So this was like 2003. I've been living here in Duchess County for like twenty-four years or so. So I would like, I have the very same concerns as everybody in my neighborhood said. But I have one more concern, which I faced like maybe fifteen years back. I was driving on Rockway, there was a truck driver right in front of me. And as, as you know, I'm a little different than everybody else, I do cover my hair. So he saw me in his back mirror, he stopped his truck. I get a little emotional when I talk about it, sorry for that. So he came to me and said, go back to the place from where you came. I was shivering, I couldn't do anything, the road is so narrow, I couldn't drive on the side of the truck, not, I couldn't revert back. I did report this incident to the Fishkill Police, so it can be validated. So now, my concern is, besides all of those which are shared, is will I be facing more of this? So please consider issues of someone like me, when you give access to more of trucks on Rockway. And it's still, I still get emotional about it. I have fear for truck drivers now, on Rockway. I never, I avoid to walk on Rockway in nights and evenings and all. So please, I have, it's just a request, please, before you make any decision, do consider for people who are walking alone, who are different than others, and so on and so forth. Thank you so much.
What I'm thinking of now, to be honest with you, with the volume of people, the number of people, strangers coming from somewhere else, we don't know. We have no idea who they are. Possibility of violence is going to be there. One way or another. Now what are we going to do when there is a violence? I mean, this is what I'm concerned, I'm looking at, it's two hundred and fifty parking spaces, two or three in a car. Then do the math, for that five, six, seven hundred people at the same time. Is there any control over any drugs? Any control over drinking? This is an open invitation for people to come from all over the place, to do whatever they want. And who can control them? You know what? If violence happens, then I think it's too late. Too late to reverse what we decided to do here. Thank you, I'm sorry for that.
Anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
My name is Kevin Mulligan, I live at forty-two oh six Rich Quest Drive. You know, I'm new to this, I didn't realize the scale of what we're talking about here. But it seems to me that, number one, the parking situation is out of hand, okay? Based upon the current configuration of how these cars are getting in and out, it's not going to fly. If you saw what nine D was like tonight, to get on the Newburgh Beacon Bridge, okay? The two hundred and fifty cars that wanted to get into Rockway wouldn't have got in. And if they would have got in, they wouldn't have gotten out, okay? That's how bad it was. And this was into the evening, which doesn't really go that far, but it did. They need to build their own road to their city. They're building a city, okay, on, on, on the land that they own. They want to be, they want their office space, they want this, they want their entertainment, okay? It's all theirs. So let them be responsible for themselves getting them in and out of there. Instead of using a road that we all depend on, that's going to go way away. Okay? And I have no children, I see the kids around, okay? We, we need to be treated, in this case, like, like we matter. And apparently, from what I hear, that's not the treatment that's being given to us. So I really think you need to consider that, if they want to, they got plenty of money, I'm sure, let them build their own road. Thank you.
I'm Debbie LaSisaro, five four oh eight Boulder Way. I just feel like if we allow this to happen, we're not going to have any control over anything. I mean, there, I concur with what everyone was saying. I'm afraid for the kids too. I mean, the, the amount of traffic that's going to be up and down, it, it's, we're waiting for something to happen. And, and then it's going to be too late. I mean, we're taxpaying citizens here. And we're allowing people who don't pay taxes to have their way with whatever they want. Well, that's, that's all I have to say. I, I hope you vote against it. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Ma'am, you already spoke, I know I let the other man speak twice, but...
She spoke on another man, and now...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, sorry, go ahead.
Right, I obviously don't live where these other families do, I live on Baxter Town. But I can tell you that I'm hearing a lot of concern about noise. And having lived for forty years on Baxter Town Road, and lived in Fishkill my entire life, I can tell you that the amount of times that we've had to call with noise disturbances to the town of Fishkill Police has met with no support. The town is allowed to, the noise can be till ten o'clock at night, and after that, good luck. good luck.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I, I see no show of hands, but at this point, I'm gonna put Dominic on the spot, and I'm gonna ask you if you could briefly speak to how our public hearings are conducted and how we differentiate, differentiate our public hearing from our project review portion of the evening?
Yeah, no, thank you. As, as you mentioned, you know, the, the agenda itself is broken up into two portions. The initial portion is the public hearing, when a public hearing is being held on a project, and it's held at the beginning of the meeting so that it doesn't inconvenience the public, where they would have to wait, you know, necessarily for this project to come up on the agenda. And so that they can get their public comment in early without having to wait, you know, meetings of the Fishkill Planning Board can and do sometimes go till eleven o'clock at night, and so having the public hearing portion at the front gets everyone the opportunity to address the board early, and if they can, they want to stick around, they're welcome to stick around and then hear the project discussion later on. But it is split, it's bifurcated that way. And, you know, the, the obligation and the process to have a public hearing is governed both by state law, and it's also governed by the town's code itself. And so they, and of course, there's also rules that, as you mentioned earlier on, regarding the conduct of, of public hearings as well, as far as what the board's procedure is. There was a number of comments, including a commenter early on, who suggested to the effect that, you know, the, the purpose of a public hearing and the public's input on project is meant to keep the public hearing open, and the public hearing should be kept open, according to the commenter. Actually, there was more than one, so that the public could continue to, you know, review and comment on the application as the application moves forward through the process. But despite that request and suggestion to the board, the purpose of the public hearing is to get the public's concerns, so that the board has the input of the public while it's processing the application. And when there's been a full and fair opportunity for the public to comment on an application, then it will be appropriate for the board to consider closing the public hearing at that time. I'm not suggesting that this particular moment is the time to close the public hearing, it's just that there comes a time when public hearing can and should be closed, and that is because the public at that point has been given the opportunity to review the proposal, and then it becomes within the purview of the board to review the proposal, to review the comments that were raised by the public, to also go through the comments that the board's consultants might have, but ultimately, it's the board's decisions, rig-making process that is what governs this whole process. So there was a number of comments tonight about leaving the public hearing open. I think the real question is whether or not there's going to be any additional information that's forthcoming, either from the applicant, or review of any technical aspects of this that would warrant additional public comment on those items.
Yes, and I'd like to get to that, but I apologize for taking a little extra time here, but I, I think it's very important considering the level of comments we received tonight. Could you briefly speak, there were many concerns, um, real concerns for real residents, I just, can you explain items that are in our purview and items that are not? Because I think that may very well be an important discussion.
Yeah, you know, so it, it really requires an understanding of what the planning board's role in this process is, and it's unfortunate if people have an expectation that it's simply something that is entirely discretionary and can be completely rejected or changed or minimized by the planning board, because quite frankly, the planning board doesn't have that kind of authority. And in some ways, the planning board is actually misnamed, and, and this is all throughout New York State. So they're called planning boards, but what you really are is your planning review board, because the plans are being prepared by applicants, right? And so an applicant is preparing plans, and this board's obligation is really kind of, has two areas of concern. One is whether or not the application and the proposal fits within zoning code and the other technical requirements of the code, to make sure that things that are being proposed are actually allowed where they're proposing to put them. And then secondly, you have also broader authority under the State Environmental Quality Review Act to look at potential significant environmental impacts. And if there are potential significant environmental impacts, to make sure that the applicant is doing what they can to reasonably address those impacts and mitigate those impacts. To answer your question, there were a number of items that have been raised by the public, in my opinion, tonight, that are certainly within the jurisdiction of the board. There's a lot of comments regarding traffic, and the board has asked the applicant to undertake a traffic analysis, to look at the potential impact of traffic on 9D associated with this proposal. There's also a number of comments regarding noise, noise and hours of operation, that is clearly within the board's jurisdiction under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. There are other comments regarding property values, for instance, which has been litigated a long time ago, is not an appropriate factor for the board to consider in making its decisions. It's not an environmental factor, quite frankly, people don't like to hear that, you know, because they have an, you know, a concern, it's a real world concern over a potential, you know, financial impact to them, but it's a financial issue, and it's also not an environmental issue. And what, the board is limited to looking at the things that it has jurisdiction over, and unfortunately, that is not one of them. So the other things that came up tonight in connection with being within the board's purview was public safety and public access, you know, to the site. So my suggestion would be is, first, the issue is whether or not the board is going to close the public hearing. You can, you have several options, you can keep the public hearing open, you could close the public hearing, or you could close it and allow additional written comment for a period, and that would be the, the first thing to do. The other thing that I think might be helpful here, and we also discussed this at last month's meeting, in connection with Van, Van Wyck Muse, was asking the applicant to prepare a responsiveness summary as to how they propose to address the comments that have been raised by the public tonight. That might be helpful, and it doesn't necessarily bind this board, but it gives the board more information as to, you know, how the applicant is proposing to address the concerns that have been raised. There have been a lot of legitimate concerns that have been raised, and keeping track of all of them would be difficult for the board, but it might be helpful if the applicant would identify what they see as things that were issues that they could make their effort to address.
Understood, and I, I was not planning to ask you that tonight, but I, just considering how the hearing went, I thought it was helpful to, not just us, but to the public as well, to have that discussion, so I, I do appreciate it.
I'm an attorney and I get paid by the, by the word, so you, you give me the microphone, I'm not gonna give it up.
I'll take that into consideration before I ask you the next question. So I, I think what this board needs to discuss at this point would be whether to keep the public hearing open, and I have an initial thought that the hearing should be kept open, and I will give my reason of being that one of the items we asked for from the applicant was a scope of work for a traffic study. We also asked our consultant at CPL for their input on a outline for a traffic study, and I think it would be very important to have that discussion during our project review, and perhaps even authorize that study to begin, and I think it would be helpful to have that in our possession for the hearing is closed, and I, Dominic, I'll...
That, that would be my recommendation as well, I think it might be helpful to hear from the applicant regarding the timing of their preparation of the traffic study.
And also the other items that were brought up, I know they prepared a memo as well, which we'll talk about, where they addressed or spoke to some of the items that were brought up.
They did, they did.
That would be part of this as well, and I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, it's quite all right.
I have another request from Dominic. One of the members of the public raised a question of why we didn't have more than one sign. That's what the public can, can you please explain?
Yeah, that, that issue was also raised at last month's meeting, and, and, yeah, and there was a discussion of that. The board does have the discretion to require more than one sign, but it's discretionary with this board. So the request was made last time, it's not mandatory that there be more than one sign. and the board did not require more than one sign.
And we cannot have the signs outside the applicant's property, right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct, I mean, they can only put signs where they control to be able to put signs, and also I believe that there was, there was some, I saw some allegations that the sign was moved or, or taken away, or, or what, or whatnot, I, I don't wanna comment on that, but I do wanna, you know, the obligation on the applicant was to comply with the requirements of the public hearing law in the town, and in my opinion, the applicant complied with those requirements, scheduling this particular public hearing.
Tom, so my concern, and I've been, lived across the way from here, from the town hall, and I see the signs that are out there, half the time they're flopped over, half the time they're turned at an angle, they're written, I have good eyesight, and I, and I go to the deli right across the street, and I can't read them. And you expect people driving at thirty to forty miles an hour to be able to see those signs and understand what's going on, the way they're, they're structured, I mean, it's just me just thinking out loud about how this whole process goes, and then even when it's on a piece of property, you're gonna cause a traffic jam if you stop to read a sign.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's kind of a faulted kind of thing. That's the way I look at it.
No, I think it's a great input, and I think that, I mean, the, the sign that is out there, if, if I understand correctly, complies with protocol that was previously established by the town.
Oh, I understand that, I mean, it's protocol, but...
No, no, but where I was going with this is that maybe it's appropriate to change that protocol and make it a larger sign, so that it becomes easier for people to see.
And that would be an item that would be brought up to the town board, that's not something that this board can legislate whatsoever.
Correct.
Very good. I, I'd like to go down the line here, board members, and get their thoughts on whether they should keep, we should keep this public hearing open, I've made my, my status known, like Vijay.
I would, I would vote to be kept open.
Bob?
Yes.
I mean, I, yeah, I would like to open, or maybe we can close and keep the online comments open for another couple of weeks, till the Memorial Day weekend.
Felix?
Yeah, I think, given that, I would like to see the traffic study, I'd like to see the traffic study. One of the biggest issues everybody's bringing up is the traffic, and I totally understand the concern, and it's kinda hard to really figure out what type of traffic is gonna come in when they're just talking about spaces and we're not sure really who's coming in and out. I mean, I know they say primarily their people, but we don't know in the future what's gonna happen, so I think it's important that traffic study is gonna be very important for us. So I would like to keep the traffic, to keep the public hearing open, but I do wanna make one comment about the signs, and I, I appreciate that, you know, you wanted to do that for us. You have to also understand our side of it too, if you don't mind. We don't have that authority to put it somewhere outside of the applicant's property.
Yeah.
And the problem, and, and I totally understand, I, I'd be in favor of having signs all over the place, but we don't have that authority, that's, that's town code, the town board is the one that puts that code together, so we have to go by it, and if we ever made the exception, for one, then we're gonna open up that Pandora's Box where, then we may have that issue come up all the time. So I truly understand what you're saying, I really do, and don't think it came on deaf ears here, it really wasn't, okay? I, I would love to, I would walk up and down the road with a sign if we could, okay? So, and, and I really want everybody to comment as best we can, so we'd, we'd love to keep this open, keep the comments coming, and we, we really listen to everything you say, and if you write to us, even better, 'cause we read it and we're able to keep that. So please, just think about it that way also, in case you forgot to come up, whatever you wanted to say, you forgot, maybe just write, and we do read it.
Fred?
What I, I also agree, I also agree about the traffic study, I'd like to see more about it, because that is a big concern, and I have that big concern with all of Fishkill. So, and I did drive down the road, and I did see the sign up down at the bottom of the hill, and I understand why it was there, and I understand there was no other place to put it. So I would say, let's keep it open for, at least until we get through the traffic study, because I believe that, and maybe a noise study.
Jody?
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, you know, in connection with the public hearing, and the fact that the board, and I think the public would benefit from the traffic study that, you know, is being required but hasn't been prepared yet, one option to consider would be, instead of holding the public hearing open until next month's meeting, which will be your June meeting, we'd actually be putting it over to July to give the applicant enough time to prepare that study and have it submitted to the town. You know, otherwise, you know, I, I just, there may not be any new information at the June meeting in order to have it on, and of course, you know, we have a large number of public that are interested, but they may come out, but there not, might not be anything new for them to review or talk, discuss at that time.
Does that mean we're gonna keep the, also receiving letters during that time?
Of course.
So that would not, keeping the hearing open would not require a vote, do you think?
Well, what I would suggest is that you would adjourn it to the July meeting, and that way, that would serve as the public's notice, you know, that it's going to be reconvened at the July meeting rather than at the June meeting. And that way, everyone knows that that's what it's going to be, rather than coming next month and expecting there's going to be a public hearing and not having one.
I would, I would support that approach of adjourning to, to the July, and I guess, would it be just continuing the hearing at that time?
That's correct, it would be continued to the July meeting, and I'm sorry, I don't have the date in front of me.
That would be July fourteenth.
So to adjourn until July would require a motion.
Yes.
Okay, so I will, actually, Dominic, before I do that, I should activate our alternate planning board member, I know we have a recusal.
Yes, in order, in order to acknowledge him as a voting member tonight, that's correct.
So if I just say so right now that he's a voting member?
He's appointed, the alternate is appointed as a voting member, correct.
Okay, our alternate...
But the, I believe the applicant may also wanna address the board before you take your motion, perhaps.
Would it be a...
Yes, please, up to the microphone, please.
Thank you very much. Just to inform the board, the traffic study has begun already. Based on the recommendations made, we provided the proposal... Based on the recommendations made, we provided the proposal. Mr. Board, I think you've provided some additional requests. Those have been taken to the consultant. The consultant is beginning that work as well. So that traffic study is underway, based on good faith from last week's, last month's meeting. I get that started. So I don't know that we would need to, July.
Listen, I was offering it to be an accommodation, really, to the applicant, you know, so that you can have that information in and have enough time to do it. I, I have, it's not a legal issue, it's really more of a, of a timing issue, so I defer to you and the board.
What is the deadline for June submissions?
I'm sorry?
For the June submissions, what are the, what is the...
Because I'm secretary. That would be May 25th, so they would need to address these comments and have everything done. That's why I think Dominic is opposing July.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'm just trying to inform the applicant, so May 25th is probably...
Yeah, I mean, I think in addition to the traffic study, there was a lot of items brought up tonight. We'll talk about some of it during the project review, but I, I still think it's appropriate to have a compilation of the comments and a full record, so.
We respect that.
July might be...
Please understand, we'd be happy to accommodate you sooner than that, but we understand that that's the desire of the board.
If they're willing to have it ready for June, then I, I think we can just keep the public hearing open without a motion, then.
Yeah, I, I would make, you know, my, my preference would be to suggest a motion to continue the public hearing to the June meeting. I think the only downside to that is, is that if the materials aren't ready, then it's more likely than not that the public hearing would be held open until July at that point.
We respect that.
Yeah.
If, if that's, if you believe your application could be ready. So, yeah, the public hearing will hold it open until the, you said, the June?
June 9th meeting.
June 9th.
June, June 9th meeting.
Yes.
And do we still have the sign there, David?
The sign is still there. From what I understand, it's been put back in the place where it belongs, by the applicant.
So that's...
They found it?
That's all that happens, is a sign, and it's posted on the website.
Yeah.
It traveled. Let's just put it that way.
So I think we've, I'm doing, understanding that the hearing will be...
The hearing will be continued on June 9th, and I apologize for trying to be helpful and make it even more confusing.
Thank you, David.
Unless there, there's no motion to be made, so I think that's, that's it for now, right? That's it for now?
Yes, sir.
Right.
So I guess you have to announce that.
So where?
Do I have to?
Yeah, I mean, my, my preference and my practice is recommend a motion to keep the public hearing open to the June 9th meeting.
I, I will entertain a motion to keep the public hearing for Fishkill Support Center, Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan open until the June 9th meeting.
Second, or first?
Fred has made the motion.
I'll second the first.
Felix is second. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Well, we have one, but we have a, our alternate voting, so it's a seven to zero vote. I think that's it. We can get John back in here.